Well, welcome and good afternoon. It is Monday, June 17th, and it's 3:30 PM. This is the work session of the Port of Olympia Commission. And I'm officially calling this work session to order. And would just like to welcome our guest, the Port of Olympia Citizens Advisory Committee. Nice to have the, nice to have the whole group here together today. So we do have an agenda in front of us. Do we have a motion to approve today's agenda?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for today. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving today's agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. We have an agenda. One quick announcement. Commissioner Harding will not be joining us today. She has an excused absence. The first item on our agenda is Port of Olympia Citizens Advisory Committee Work Product and Discussion. Camille, are you starting us off or?
Actually, Executive Director.
Started it all off, just to say, we're excited to have the PoCAC come and meet directly with you all today. They've got some work products that they have put together for some of their subcommittees that they really wanted to share with you. And then we also wanted to have the opportunity for you all to have a discussion about how they can help you and what you would really appreciate from them in their role as the Citizens Advisory Committee. So I'll turn it back over to Camille. Or do I turn it over to Joel? Joel and Don.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna quickly turn it over to the subcommittee. But thanks for having us. We're happy to be here, excited to share some of the work that the PoCAC has been doing and then have a discussion about the work that we can be doing to support the commission and staff looking forward. There's a lot of opportunity and we're excited to have a dialogue about that. So I will turn it over to Bob, but he's the chair of the subcommittee that's been working on Destination Waterfront. That's the one active assignment that we have from the commission. And they've done a lot of great work and I'm excited to hear about it.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity for us to share with you today. We've been working for about eight months. Before we get into the substance, I want to introduce the people who have been involved. So Joel, who you just met, Deb, Quentin, Sue, Arlene. And Jim, Jim. Sorry, I'm here. All right, there we go. And this is our wonderful picture that you see up there. So what we want to do is, we got four parts. The first is a little background on where we came from, what happened before. The second is our recommendations. Third is to show you some of the exciting work that's been happening in other ports that you may or may not know about. And then lastly, and most importantly, we're hoping to have a conversation with all of you about your thoughts, how we might move forward, things you liked and things that perhaps you did not like. So with that, the first genesis of this one goes quite a ways back, but in the recent iteration was Vision 2050, which I think you've all heard about. It was completed in 2019 at about four different sections. One of the sections dealt with Destination Waterfront and Boat Works. And action plan items, you can see out of that was for Marina and Boat Works, add amenities and access to the water along the peninsula and build connections between Swan Town and Core Downtown. When it came to Destination Waterfront, it recommended doing a task force to develop recommendations. So that task force was created and out of it came a Destination Waterfront Development Vision. This says it was completed in 2023, but there were some different iterations, different PowerPoints. The first one that I could see was in 2021 where the full plan was presented to the commission. It dealt with a fair number of different things. The major piece was looking at a development plan for different sections. But it was very general. It provided a good sort of, here's the regulatory framework. The only two recommendations that were actually in it was the RV park, which perhaps you've heard about, that is not accepted by the City of Olympia. And the second was the administrative building. Other than that, there were really no solid recommendations in it. So the planning area, the bottom left is the North Point area. And it spanned all the way down to the south, down near the Children's Museum. It was broken up into different components. And each component, each section had recommendations, had the restrictions, and had, here's some possibilities. So this is very difficult for you to read. I'm gonna even take my glasses so I can read what's there. Let me highlight a couple of things. So this is question seven. And it was, what opportunities would benefit the community? So there was a large public outreach effort. And on this particular question, the one with the previous line off on the left was public access and amenities. The second is education, the museum, the small local businesses, arts and entertainment, sailing center, and then moving down from there. Question five, which we found relevant to the work that we're doing, was, what ways can we provide public access to the water? And the way this one is structured, here, here we go. On the far right, the largest one is a small boat resources. They extend the walking trail. And the next one is public access parks and green space, beaches and public spaces. So that's what the group heard from the public. This slide summarizes the outcome statement of the major planning effort. And it talks about restaurants, recreation, public art, visitor accommodations, inviting and walkable. They talk about one anchor hospitality tenant, port business and administrative offices, public amenities, and view preservation. So that basically summarizes the Destination Waterfront plan effort and the outcomes that they would like to see. So about six months ago, the Citizen Advisory Committee created a subcommittee on Destination Waterfront. And our charge was working with you all, working with port staff, come up with recreational water access, tourist facilities and other uses that are potentially viable. That was our, something that could be done. So when you look at, when was Vision 2050 done? Where are we today? It's five years. And some of us, I don't know about you all, but impatient, like to see things done. We want action, even a small action. And so created this bottom line is what low-cost interim steps could be taken. Show the public that the port is moving forward in providing additional amenities, additional access, moving forward with Destination Waterfront. And so those are our potentially viable actions. I'm gonna now turn it over to Sue and hit this button. I'm gonna come up with, here's our three potentially viable options.
I get to do the button, huh? Which one? Okay, so the first, first potentially viable action was Billy Frank Jr. Trail. Making sure that it was enhanced, safe and accessible. And then we were looking at developing partnerships with the City of Olympia and watercraft groups. So how can we provide more public access for people and their boats? And that would include kayaks, canoes, any kind of watercraft. And then the third was the finalization of the Billy Frank Park, which is at the north end of the Billy Frank Jr. Trail. And the North Point Community, some kind of North Point Community Event Center. If you go down there now, you know you can park at the North Point where the cap is on Cascade Pole Site and walk down to the end of the trail and out to North Point, to the Billy Frank Jr. Park. So the Billy Frank Jr. Trail enhancement, the objective was to improve and enhance the Billy Frank Jr. Trail that originates at the south end of the planning area and ends at the North Billy Frank Jr. Park area. It says port staff are installing Billy Frank Jr. Kiosk and signs, but they have been installed. And if you walk down there, you'll be taken back by how beautiful they are. It's just an amazing area. The signs are, I think there's about eight panels, six or eight panels. And they're very descriptive of Billy's place in tribal culture here in South Sound. And it talks a lot about his struggles trying to get the up-to-the-bolt decision. And it was down there, it was because I've been involved so much with the Foxen Tribe, their ongoing cultural access to this area. The north end of the trail, though, itself, the Billy Frank Jr. Park is not necessarily connected to the park. Yet you go out and park at North Point and then walk down and get on the trail. The surface is uneven in places and it's probably not ADA accessible at this point. Directional information and signage is lacking down there. We need to be a little more, we need to make the trail more aware of people and how to get down there from the very beginning of the trail. We would like to suggest that we improve signage, landscaping and connect it to the parking lot on the engine and improve ADA accessibility. So I don't know if you can see this line, but starting here, all along the waterfront out to North Point is where the Billy Frank Jr. Trail is. That's the location of the trail. The north section again ends at Billy Frank Jr. Park. And here are some pictures of, oh, of the trail along the way. There's a need for landscaping on the water side. And today I was out there this morning and they were mowing the grass on the left side. And I was thinking to myself, there were flowers growing and stuff and they were all get mowed. And I thought, no, because it was, it was already, the grass is already dead for the summer. And it was being mowed and it just seemed like kind of overkill. And then on the far right, you'll see the end of the trail at where the round, it kind of loops around. And there is a fence that is put up to keep people from walking into the private area where KGY is. And then right on that board on the gravel, there's some rebar sticking up, which is Neil's working with staff, maintenance staff to get that taken out because it's a tripping hazard. So I think at this point, yeah.
So the second recommendation is for the City of Olympia and community groups to create more access for small watercraft. And there's a short-term possibilities and then there's the long term. The long term is a nice sailing center out a little south of Hearthfire. It would be a great location, but it's after dredging, it's after fill. It's, I don't know if I'm gonna be a live bet by then, but it's far away. And that would be fabulous. It would be a destination lots of people would come to. The nearer term solution is to look at some on-dock boat storage. The port has put in some, a new paddleboard stand. If you walk down the guest dock, there's a place also for kayak storage. But that area right down where ORE is could be a place where people could come to and have access to their own or others' boats, similar to what we have with ORE. And as you know, ORE is pretty incredible. Probably the next important step that needs to be made is maybe hire a new waterfront director. Now the TJ is gone. And then work with the Olympia Community Sailing Port of Olympia and see what short-term solutions might be possible in the guest storage area comes to this. So with that, I think I turn it over to Quentin.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. The area I'm gonna speak on is specifically Park, Billy Frank Park. And the cap, the lower cap, is just out there. And as you use personal landing as an example, that's a possible example of how we can improve that specific area, which has got quite a bit of space to it. The area has spectacular views, as you probably well aware, but we'll show you some of those. And that area is really, it's a functional park and trail, but it could be enhanced. I think Sue mentioned ADA accessibility would be an example. Possible bathroom down there. People come to visit, the first thing they ask for is a bathroom. So those are some things that we've been thinking about. We don't have all the expertise to figure these things out. So what we would recommend is to hire a landscape architect for a small dollar amount, budget, hopefully this year, and work through and discern what options may actually exist for the cap and for the park. Now, we have some ideas of what we would might recommend. That again, you know, we're trying to provide public access, right? For the entire public. So those who will want to make sure that they had access to that area. You know, additional landscaping would be helpful out there. There's no trees or anything really at that park in there. So we think that, you know, maybe partnering with community nonprofits here in town, city. You know, we can learn a little bit more about what our options are and what can be done. Because some of these local community groups have a lot of knowledge about, you know, plants, what works, what doesn't work. We want to figure out a way to connect the trail to a designated parking area. Right now, there's Hearthfire, right? And there's a bunch of space there that's really kind of not designated as parking. So we want to figure out a way for people who want to park there, to formally park there. And if they're disabled, maybe they would have a disabled park basis. So those are some of the things we've been thinking about, you know, children play structures, encourage families to come down there. Try to figure out a way to promote the area and enhancing it is one way to do that. So the next slide, I think you all familiar with what we're talking about, but we're talking about Site A here, which is about a half acre. Includes the cap and the park. Yeah, this is what it looks like now. As I said, it's functional, right? We have a functional trail. But is that what you want to leave it as? It could be enhanced and to, you know, to encourage people to come down there. I believe it can be and it can be beautified and made a great, made as a great destination. So the next slide is some of the good news. There is something you don't have to pay for. There are already down there, there are resources there that are available to everyone. There's wildlife there in a, you know, a lot of different types. There's harbor seals, terns. There's just a variety of wildlife down there that you don't have to pay to see. They're just there. You have to go out and look for them. And all through the year, these, these animals come and go. They're partners with you whether you like it or not. And they're out there and they're there for our enjoyment. The otter was on the, the river otter was on the Hearthfire Dock. And I think you all probably are familiar with the pumper ants in the area. They move in and out of that space to Witter Park, Witter Park. Probably 800 nesting pairs in the air. Top left slide is your partnership with the harbor seals are right by your dock. You can go out there and see them about any day. The people come out there and count them. I don't know who they are, but there's, there's, there's times over 150 harbor seals in that area. And you also have down on the bottom there, you're, you're, the ospreys that come and nest down by the Hearthfire Bridge every year. And a couple of years ago, they were very successful. They had three leslings that came out of that nest. So I mean, the ability of the port to coexist with wildlife and nature is just demonstrated by this. And if we can encourage people to support that, I think that would help, help, help the port, help us as a community. So not, that slide, play that first video.
Am I playing your video or the Bellingham?
Mine. Crossed. This is the view from the, from North Point. Take advantage of it, you know, and by enhancing the park, I think we could draw more people down there. Thank you for your time and.
So I, I'm Debbie Patton and I'm gonna talk about how other ports have recognized the benefits of putting in these community amenities. So. Cassie's bird here.
Can I stop for just one second?
Here.
I am not sharing this, so I need to get back into the camera.
Okay.
Debbie, put together the presentation you're about to do.
The whole thing or just this part?
All of it.
We did it as a group.
We did it as a group. Very good.
Was Harry Branch involved?
I don't think we need to answer those questions.
Sorry. No, the case studies you're about to show are very helpful.
I did that part of the case studies. I'll take credit for that. I didn't do that. Okay, I thought you were talking about the overall. Okay, are we, are we back on? Oh, great. Okay. So a number of other ports in the area are recognizing the benefits of enhancing the waterfront. And they provide picnic areas or restaurants or amphitheaters or whatever. So the benefit to the port is that it, you know, it provides tangible benefits to the taxpayers and it increases tourism revenue for area businesses and creates jobs. And then it provides additional port lease revenue. So there are numerous examples of urban working waterfront ports here in Western Washington. And this is just a list of several of them. Bellingham and Everett and Vancouver and Tacoma and Silverdale, Seattle. Kalama, some of you have been down to Kalama. Kalama is not really a urban port, it's a small town on the river with a freeway running right beside it, but it's super busy port. And so I'm just gonna show you some of these sites and.
Yeah, we also wanted, Jim Tor, we wanted to point out that most of these ports and the amenities we're going to show you were formerly industrial lands or contaminated lands that we claimed. My rear with ecology, as I permitted almost all of these facilities at one time or another, worked at these Holton Paper Mills and other facilities that are now all public areas. It's an amazing transformation of these.
So we have a video here that Missy's gonna play. I gotta go to the next slide, sorry, about the, what they've done up at the Port of Bellingham with this. Picture here is an area that they call the Portal Container Village. And it's a private public venture. So Missy, go ahead and show this video, please.
This is a site of a former Holton Paper Mill in Bellingham.
Thanks, Missy. So you can see that those are shipping containers stacked up and in the, in this, in your picture, a little bit back to the slide, you'll see there's shipping containers all through there and they have local jewelry, they have wine tasting, food trucks or little pop-up restaurants. And it operates day and, and into the night and has many amenities for, as you saw, for families and children and teens and grownups. And it's really awesome. And then Port of Everett, this is an interesting one because, well, they have multiple parks, but this one, the rendering here is the Boxcar Park. And it incorporates the historic warehouse or building, which is internationally famous for the amount of varieties of wood incorporated into the inside of the structure. And when they opened the Boxcar Park, it was on the hundredth anniversary of opening that warehouse or building. So they moved it to a different location on the property. And now it's a whiskey and coffee bar and it's leased. The port leases it out to a concessioner. So they have all these, all these amenities there at the Port of Everett. And then the Port of Kalama, which I mentioned earlier, was right there on the river. They have three parks and two have ball fields. They're all on the water. And this one is just adjacent, I guess it would be south of the McMinimans there, but they've built an amphitheater. And so you can see that that's the green, you know, the curved with the over it. And we envisioned something like that, that amphitheater on that small cap down at North Point. Apparently wildly popular. They have music and events there all the time. And then Port of Vancouver, in on the river. This is another public-private partnership to make this community park right along the river.
That's another side of the Atlantic Cascade, Holton Paper Mills.
I'd love to speak too. I think I know some of the background, but many of these public amenities were created as part of also redevelopment that brought in revenues to the site, whether it was commercial or retail or housing. So this is the part that opens up the space for all the community, but there usually is a component that has a little bit more to do with.
That's, that's true.
That's, that's true. Um, but what I think is unique is notice how they've used the water, uh, actual waterfront as the community entity. Behind that, what you really will see, maybe condos, businesses, other port development facilities. But we're really focused on the community amenities, uh, so that, that's, that's what you're seeing.
If I can add to that, uh, uh, Jasmine, with, with, uh, Vancouver, I, I know they, they, uh, uh, it was fairly, fairly complicated development and, and they, uh, they utilized the multi-family tax protection program uh, in order to, to spur development and I believe is an opportunity zone as well. And, uh, so, uh, condos, uh, uh, apartments, uh, uh, some, uh, affordable housing as, as well. And, and then, and then commercial, uh, and, and you're right, because, uh, in order to get all this other stuff developed without a, a huge amount of, uh, public, public dollars, those private dollars were, were leveraged in order to do that.
Another unique thing about Vancouver is that they relocated the railroad. So they've, they've somewhat hidden. It's a little below, it's not underground, but it's below ground. So it's, it's not as visible, but so it was a, they had to get the railroad through this area down to where the actual port industrial area.
And this is Port of Tacoma, right close here to us. And, uh, they have a bunch of different parks and, uh, remediation sites, but, uh, we picked these two, uh, of the many options we could pick because wanted to show this top one, which is, uh, a habitat restoration. And it has these, um, concrete, concrete ramp that allows easy public access uh, to, for people to bring their kayaks down and just unload them and right there. Um, and it goes along the inner part of commencement bay. And then the bottom photo is called Julia Gulch and that's thirty-one acres forested open space, um, that the port of Tacoma purchased to serve as a buffer between the northeast Tacoma, uh, neighborhoods and the, uh, industrial, uh, working waterfront right there. And it's full of native plants, which is what Quentin was, uh, and Sue both were talking about, uh, as an option for Billy Frank.
So another thing about the Port of Tacoma, which I think is really important for here, is they use a lot of their dredge material for, uh, restoration of Thailand's. And, and creation of, of billable areas. There's a lot of it was contaminated, it's capped, and they did a huge in-water capping program, uh, which was actually a restoration of the Thailand's. So there's contaminated material and then covered with clean material. Restore, uh, really that inner tidal area.
And then this is Silverdale, uh, also not that far away. Um, this is nice. It's right by the main pier, but they've turned it all into playground and picnic tables and bathrooms. And you can rent it for birthday parties and it's like a public parking, you know, reserve. Really, really, really pretty spot they've been in. And then Seattle, uh, has the most of all of that. I mean, makes this the biggest port, but they have sixty um, uh, parks and public a- access sites with bike trails and, uh, lots of habitat restoration sites and fishing piers and shoreline access and.
Other than they have a lot, and, and just looking at this picture, it almost looks like a, a dredger out there. You can see those big dark kind of triangular things are sputs they put down to hold the, the boat in place. Yeah, obviously, they have a lot of contaminated and still they're cleaning up the Duwamish. And so there's a, a lot of reclamation topics.
If you want more information on Duwamish, I had pages and pages, but we had to keep to a time limit, but I could show you. I could send them to you later. Okay, there you go.
All right. So that concludes our formal presentation. And just going back to why we're here today. So are there low-cost interim steps that can be taken to show the port is committed to making progress and making its just its destination waterfront area more accessible, family-friendly? I think we saw lots of examples where other ports have looked at what they had and decided, okay, what would be best for them? And I think what we're proposing with our three recommendations is here's some ideas for this peninsula that we think might work. And obviously there are a lot of details that we all would need to work through, but we're hoping to get some enthusiasm, some excitement and action so that we can go to the public and say, hey, yeah, we got a new commission. We got a new executive director. Look at progresses being made. You know, have you been to North Point lately? Would be something that I'd love to hear talked about on the streets. So. There is one, one specific ask we have here, and that's for the landscape architect. You know, I know you're working on a, a master plan. But in light of that, we're hoping that we can do some interim steps to support the, support the growth of, uh, North Point, that area, uh, and wrap that into a master plan. We, we think that there's some value, like Bob was saying, in short term, and trying to do that. So there is an ask here. A financial ask.
I'd just interject that the timeline that I think this group has talked about is that if, if a small investment is made, um, in bringing in a, a landscape architect, um, and or, um, to develop some of the, the ideas for the North Point, that could be done in time for budget discussions. It was end of this year and, and perhaps even, uh, decided ask to support that as well in that plan.
So you're recommending a landscape architect for the entire peninsula or basing it kind of or?
No, just for the, uh, just for the park.
For the park, okay.
And the cap, small cap, small asphalt cap. That's just the extent of the ask.
Okay, I got you.
And on that note, could you go back in the slides to the Port of Calama picture, please? Um, as far as I can see, right now the port has some really excellent programming, but it's starting to unroll for summer because we have like this concert series. And I hope you'll all come see Queen Mother with me on June twenty-ninth, even though it's family-friendly. I might get a sitter for my kids. Um, and, uh, this idea of kind of making it a more formal amphitheater that's more clearly accessible is one I think I've heard come from the staff level or that there's been some discussions. So just invite, I'd like to invite our director, if she has any thoughts about how this fits into kind of where you've seen things going with North Point, um, given its current programming.
Oh, well, it's definitely, uh, I mean, it's awesome. So it looks great. And it's definitely along the lines of what we were thinking in terms of trying to have it be more of a gathering space and not a, like, space dedicated to a single company business or something. And so, yeah, it's most definitely, um, along the lines of what we're thinking.
And then another question, maybe for James or, or our director. We've talked about a master plan and a master plan with all the parcels that we'd be unlocking and potentially developing over time. And we can be talking about development for many that wouldn't start for ten years out, right? Um, we have all the dredging and remediation to do. That's the top priority in terms of sequencing it before, with the disheaths restoration. So one thing that, um, I've been thinking about in general is when there are investments we can make that make a difference even for the next ten years. It may not be forever investments, like building out infrastructure that's supposed to pay off over the next sixty years, but it brings the community to the waterfront. And at WPPA, we were able to hear from some of the Bellingham executive director and how they very deliberately created these amenities to bring people down. That pump track probably won't stay where it is. There's plans that the city's gonna relocate it to a larger parcel further inland. But on the near term, it was sequenced to make the waterfront available, to be a magnet and start to build off of. So I just wondering if any of you have thought about that as part of this proposal. Wouldn't you agree?
It's also really important to remember that we have to protect the environment. And everything that we do on the port property needs to take that into consideration. We don't want to do too many things anymore. Have fun.
And then we can preserve that beautiful wildlife that we got to see. It's not gonna be as valuable. And that's a big part of the value, I think, of going down there is enjoying that nature, seeing that wildlife. Right, we gotta keep it clean.
Could I speak to that? Um, I've been sailing here a long, long time. And I can tell you things are greatly diminished over, I used to see. Um, South Bud Inlet is a degraded water body and let's not kid ourselves. I think anything we do on the port peninsula, our first alternative should be cleanup and restoration. And that doesn't mean we can't put buildings into that. But the, the first step should be science. Then we should do our planning and design. I have a, uh, a blog, um, and, um, it's called Garden Bay Blog dot com. And there's a lot of data that I've collected and put in there. And I'd encourage everyone to look at that. Um, I don't object to anything we're planning here. I think there are a lot of great ideas. Let's just do it in a way that would restore salt marsh, tide flats, overhanging vegetation, um, actual real parameters, not a pile of rock with some, uh, native plants put on top or whatever. It's the upper beach, the rack zone that we want to restore. If you wanna look for models, I would go anywhere in San Francisco Bay, anywhere in California. It's the way that things are done there. We, first we restore and clean up and then we develop. Anyway.
It, in terms of the ask that the Pocac is bringing us, um, about landscape architect kind of funding for some design, do you think that that can be consistent with what you're telling us, Mr. Branch? In other words, do you think there are landscape architects who are versed in how the rack zone and the upper beach is restored as part of a public park type design process?
I'm sure there are. I don't have any names, but, um, I would say, um, maybe landscape architect wouldn't be the word I would be looking for, but someone who specialized in restoration, offshore restoration. A lot of opportunities here in Olympia in general, South Bud Inlet, we do so much here. Uh, nineteen seventy-nine, there was an out of bond Christmas bird count. They counted three thousand, roughly three thousand, oh, three thousand seven hundred and sixty birds. There were thirty-five species. And it just, over the Christmas, uh, bird counts, they go down and down and down to like a hundred and sixty-five maybe. I don't know what we would find today, not very many. Um, lots of fish of all kinds. And, uh, there were some salmon, not a lot went through the river because of the waterfall, but they spawned in the streams and they migrated through. Um, this was a very rich estuaran environment, a lot of eel grass, salt marsh, tide flats, forage fish, sandlands, surf smell. It's a beautiful, beautiful place a couple of hundred years ago and it could be again. We don't have to destroy things because we live among them. Uh, we're learning more and more that we can restore urban estuaran environments, especially urban forests. It's all about how we, how we manage the land we're living in. And, uh, like I say, I think a lot of really good ideas here. Let's just put restoration and cleanup at the front.
We're making T-shirts saying more salt marsh. We'll bring them, we'll bring them.
Who is it?
Oh, no, it's not Christopher Walken.
I think I would argue that we can do both at the same time. And when we're talking about site A, we're basically talking away from the waterfront. Uh, Billy Frank Park is right there at the waterfront. And it will help build support for future funding efforts, future restoration efforts. My dream is someday to be able to go swimming off North Point. And right now it's just so ludicrous to even think about, but maybe someday my great-great-grandchildren, I won't be doing it, will be able to go swimming from this area that we took some interim steps today, where lots of people saw it. It's a beautiful places, we've been sharing, so.
I think Bob has a really good point that bringing the public to this area to see what's there now and start to imagine what could be, or, or maybe learn the history of what was there before, like Harry's talking about, could really build support for the effort that the port's going to engage in the next however many years it's gonna take to really clean up and restore system services in split let. Um, it's a big, big undertaking and it'll take a lot of support from the public. If we can get folks to, uh, space to experience it, to see it, see the view that, um, that Quentin captured in the video, um, I think it will help to build support for the effort.
Yeah, just to go over what Bob said, we're not talking about going to the, the seashore here. We're going just on the park and the, the cap. We don't plan on going into the, you know, that's not what, what a landscape architect would, would help with.
No, it sounds like you had narrowly defined what you were bringing to us today to be the update on this action step. And, um, it's well received, at least by me. I think it's great. I was hoping, and we have a lot of time set aside for today's meeting, um, to also be able to engage in understanding how you see yourselves partnering with this commission. It may be a conversation you've had in the past with, um, Mr. Harding and Commissioner Isle. But, um, I mean, I would.
That's the second part of the agenda.
Oh, it is, okay.
That's a beautiful segue.
And before we go there, let, let's make sure I just.
Any other questions, comments for?
Just thank you for the information.
Yeah, very impressive.
Yeah, the, it's very informative and I really appreciate all the, all the effort that was put into it, especially, you know, all over the animals and, and different beautiful, uh, creatures that enjoy the
We need this more in our commission meetings. We need this community perspective and, um, and the work you brought in.
We'll come back anytime.
Absolutely, absolutely. Uh, well, beautiful segue, uh, because we, um, wanted to take some of the rest of this time to talk about how we can serve mission, how we can, uh, connect you to community voices, how we can be um, of aid in the work that this commission is and, and staff are taking forward. Um, and as you can see from the presentation, this subcommittee, um, it's just loaded with talent that is really relevant issue um, of the work that they're doing. You have, you know, people that have worked on restoration projects and reclamation projects, people that have been involved in community groups, involved in sailing and, and, uh, the waterfront activities. And, um, people who are very closely tied to the working waterfront, um, through, so, the, the, um, this is a, a microcosm of what the Pocac is at large and just the amount of experience and how targeted it is to the work that I think the port staff and commission are doing. Um, I, in the last week, asked some of the folks on the Pocac to, to share with me just few thoughts about why they were here, why they choose to give their time to this endeavor, or what issues they're most interested in engaging with, and then what experience they bring. And just some of the things that I heard, um, one, you know, why, why people chose to join the Pocac. It's all the things you would expect, right? Service to community, opportunity that the port has, the ability to give back, contribution. Um, the experience that we have on the Pocac, um, the public affairs facilitation, budgeting, uh, engineering, environmental engineering, trade. Um, all of these skills that people bring to this uh, to this group and then the issues, really a lot of the folks have decided to join the Pocac because of the opportunities with Bud Inlet and, and the estuary restoration. Chris Vasavada, you would go mention top priority uh, in the same sentence as Bud Inlet restoration and estuary restoration. And that's really comes through loud and clear when you talk to the members of the Pocac. That is, those are the issues that people here are most interested in, not to the exclusion of everything else, but those are the things that we're most interested in. And so, building on the success of the Destination Waterfront Subcommittee, we would like to engage in a discussion about what would the next subcommittee be? And I think our um, proposal is that we find a way to stand up a subcommittee focused on estuary restoration, Bud Inlet cleanup and, and sea level rise and those um, interlocking issues that the, the commission and staff are going to be working on. That we find a way to have a Pocac Subcommittee that can really support those efforts and lend uh, some weight to that to, to those endeavors. Um, and I, you know, look to, to Dawn, uh, who also has thoughts about this and then also open it up to the members of the Pocac to just have a dialogue with you all about how we think we might serve the, the effort and um, connect these efforts to the public in both directions.
Well, I think Joel covered it for the most part. Um, one thing I'd like to let you know, and from our perspective, we've had some general conversations about this and we all kind of agree that it's important to take a holistic approach. Well, this in a way, the um, estuary restoration is, is an opportunity to actually look at it in a, a larger frame, the whole area in terms of what we might um, accomplish. And we might uh, even be able to help you in that regard in terms of, of relationships, you know, with, with other entities, um, both government entities and the public, any other kind of um, organizations that are out there, you know, looking into this kind of uh, work. So um, we would suggest that we would develop a second subcommittee, this would be our second subcommittee. And it would be in some, entail something to do with either restoration or maybe more general, just the environmental issues that are um, on the table. And we can, we can have a conversation now about that, or if you'd like, we can have more conversations amongst ourselves and we can come up and with staff and come up with um, recommendation to you about, you know, what we're thinking, if that would be an approach.
I, I'll just say one thing, Dawn, you brought up a good thing during your presentation. One of the things that caught my attention was the mention of, of the public-private partnerships that helped to, to bring these projects uh, together. Um, and I would hope that the next phase of, or the next task that the Pocac takes on, that could be an element of that uh, that task, help facilitate some of those uh, relationships.
Yeah, my only, uh, definitely the environmental issues are um, the challenge of our generation of the port, right? And the challenge of kind of new commission, wanting to be stewards. My concern about breaking that out as a subcommittee is just the concern about the holistic approach you were first referencing. For example, the next step I'd like to see on this um, destination advisory work is something where if Sue, Harry and James would come forward with a shared recommendation about like what we should be asking for in this, whether it's landscape architecture, but the RFP for North Point, I know there's a lot of the community that would feel, gosh, th- these people all see this as a legitimate way to go about it. That it would bring trust from people who know you through your work and long careers in the community. And so I, I worry about the people who have like the strong environmental interest, like going into a corner about scientific studies instead of helping influence, like, how are we going to develop? Like, what do we do that's responsible? And so maybe you can tell me, that's, I'm making a false, I'm setting up a false conflict because actually how you would envision the environmental committee working with, for example, the Destination Waterfront Committee, that's what I'd like you to address.
I would just, I think, make a point that I think we have a diversity of opinions on the Pocac and I think that's a really good thing. We're not um, in an echo chamber here. And, and I, and I think that our strength largely is because we have different lived experiences, different relationships to this waterfront area and different um, ideas about what could be moving forward and what the challenges are. And I, and I really think that that's an important piece of what we bring to the table. And, and if we were to put together a subcommittee working on this specifically, I would encourage those first voices to be on that subcommittee so that we aren't just all the environmental engineers on Pocac and put them on a subcommittee, right? Um, I, I would, I would encourage um, that we were thoughtful about making sure all those voices are represented.
We've had some general discussions about if we have multiple subcommittees, that the subcommittees would actually make recommendations to the full Pocac. So that's one way that we would ensure that, you know, all voices were heard.
I will mention, um, I don't, I don't think this is official, but I've had uh, conversations with the environmental director. Um, and he seems open to the idea of having uh, a subcommittee supporting even his team in this work and, and interacting and, and the, the subcommittee providing feedback and, and the staff providing direction or, or asking uh, you know, can you get us more information about these, you know, these questions? And so, I, I see it as, if done thoughtfully, a way to provide support and, and just expand the capacity of, of the staff.
I think it's really important to have um, different voices working on the environment and the economy and the environment and development together. And, and there's, you know, there's adversarial uh, past issues on the Pocac that, that we have. We've had issues, you know, with, with, between certain people on the Pocac. The estuary folks, the lake folks, for instance, I mean, that's, that's a known fact. But there's no reason why we can't sit down with the port's mission in mind and figure out how the environment can be protected while we're developing amazing things for the public to access and to be a part of. There's no reason we can't do that. And if you look at things in the future, like the design of the estuary and the the team that's working on that, they're thinking that way all the time. They're thinking about how we can do public access, how we can bring boats back in. Where are the fishing opportunities going to be? All those things are happening. How can we um, how can we walk side by side with the sea level rise process? And, and the salt marsh, how's that going to sequester carbon? Where can we put it so it doesn't interrupt the um, development opportunities that we know we need? Um, so there's not, there's just, there's no reason why we can't all sit down and do it. And if we get testy with each other, you know, we'll can slap us down.
He is tall.
Yeah, he's a, he's, he's a big guy.
I would like to do a plug while we have you here, that the port is currently soliciting for what is dubbed an environmental communicator position. But what I hope could become a real more environmental policy and engagement position, as my hope. So, because when I think of sort of what you're talking about and the resourcing we have, we have an engra- Shaun's a great environmental manager and he's spending all his time trying to even chase down the insurance proposals and understand, you know, the, the, the long history of, of our, our aisles and relationships to the properties. So it's clear that we need help here. I just struggle on how, like, do you have any thoughts of how you would work? Would you be working directly to advise Shaun? Or would, I saw, I read the resolution that's currently operative, like, would we be at a meeting like this without a formal order, like just talking and saying, yes, will you please come back within a month with a formal recommendation for um, an early budget amendment to fund that landscape architecture? Like, do we just ask you like that and then look for General Sarah and Maggie go like this? What, how, how does the back and forth work anyway, also with the?
Uh, Commissioner, I can tell you, since I've been here, which is not that long, but what, uh, I think it was my first day. Uh, Commissioner Iall and Commissioner Harding asked me, asked my opinion on some, some ideas regarding the Pocac. So um, what I understand has happened is that um, the commission has, as a, as a whole, has been uh, making uh, decisions about what the ask, the assignments are to the uh, the Pocac. And staff is, has uh, worked with the commission and with Pocac members coming up with recommendations, assignments. I have not been a part of that, except for the one very uh, short instance uh, at, at my onset. So um, that's how it's been in the past, that doesn't mean it has, it has to be that way going forward. There are a number of ways it could be approached and um, so, so I just wanted to throw that out there, that it seems like we have a a clean, potentially you could have a clean slate if you like.
The proposal would be a great next step. I, from what I'm understanding, an environmental committee would be really, or subcommittee would be really helpful. And there are some things that I think they could help Shaun with. Actually, sea, sea level rise considerations, maybe the sampling, but that proposal would really be key in knowing what those things are and what we'd expect.
One of the areas, it's personal for me, but it's the contaminated sediments dredging and what's going to be, and I think that's the big big question, probably one of the biggest investments the port city could be making in the next ten years. And I was formerly the state's expert in contaminated sediments, led dredging, dredge disposal for ten years in all the ports in the state of Washington. So that's an area that I'm, I'm obviously very interested in. And I see as being part of this environmental group is the port is going to be working with ecology. The EPA decisions are going to be made. And I think that personally, I'd like to see the Pocac involved, that we just did an advisory role. It can grow forward. These are my, and I've only been on the Pocac for a little bit more than a year, but a lot has gone on in history and I don't think the Pocac or the citizens have been involved at all. Any of these decisions that have been made and negotiations with ecology. And, and I think, you know, we would be in an advisory role, obviously not making the decision role, but making an advisory role. And I think I am really impressed with the expertise around this group. I mean, we have some really good people. Bob, you're being real quiet over there, but I know, I know Bob's history because I worked with him probably thirty years ago on some of his projects. So, you know, that is.
Silence an endorsement.
It's an endorsement with what Sue said and that is, I think we can have a testy discussions and come back, and come back with some logical, thoughtful guidance because I've been on the waterfront since nineteen eighty-one. At a marina, operating marina, I had my, my visits there since that time. And I agree with what James is saying and that is, is that I think the Pocac can help staff, help regulators understand the interface that goes on. As a, like, it's too often we get behind a, a, an agenda. Using the agenda, the agenda is really to make this a welcoming, marine-friendly, business-friendly waterfront downtown Olympia. You need a group of help, you know? That's my.
I entered, I interrupted you, but I want to give it back to you because as a sediment expert, I will have a question to build on as you continue what you were saying, which is, I'm not the sediment expert you are.
Mine is in psychology.
You're better for the Pocac. But um, as I've been engaging people kind of from Port of Tacoma or other scientists, the environmental scientists I've been meeting at um, the different conferences. What I'm hearing is there may be a disconnect between what a regu- what the regulator ecology i- is accustomed to and will mandate and what possibly some citizens will consider the best practice or the actual direction that should be taken. Science evolves, it's, and as you know, having been a regulator, like, it's not really black and white. We like to rely, we, meaning the port management over time, from what I've seen, on saying, oh, well, this got, this was, this got the stamp of approval from the regulator, so there's, what conversation is there to be had? You're, you're raising concerns, but our regulator said it was okay. How do you see um, a citizens' environmental committee kind of engaging in that dynamic?
Well, I, I guess going back to Joel, there will be a lot of different opinions, and especially with contaminated sediments. I think there's, there's a really good quote the other day. We trust in God, but all others need to bring data. And, and that's what we need to look at, is the data and and experiences with other ports around the United States. I was on a National Academy of Sciences Committee where we studied what they were doing in Boston Harbor, New York Harbor, Tampa Bay, and et cetera. So what, what is, you know, and that's where I I see that we can help kind of parse through that with our diverse opinions and expertise to advise. And in, that's, that's what I see our role of being. I don't know if I can go any farther than that.
So a specific example, dredging Swan Town Marina, there's talk about it having to be taken out and rebuilt. I'm part of a community, I've got my boat at Swan Town, I'm part of South Sound Sailing Society. That is a very big deal. And will impact a lot of people who tend to be pretty loud at times. So we potentially could help facilitate conversations about, okay, what does this mean? Does it have to be done? If it has to be done, how can it be done in stages? You've got the private marinas on the other side and just really having in-depth, honest conversations so that all of those boat owners, and there are hundreds and hundreds of them, are not negatively impacted. So we can help facilitate those conversations, as an example.
Yes, that would be really important because I think that uh, not only would they, you know, be impacted, but they, they should be, um, they should be in the conversation from the very beginning and, and so that we understand what, what their needs are and get their input as well as far as how we, how we're going to proceed with this. And what the ultimate, you know, the, the end product, how does that, how is that going to look and how is that going to affect?
And I don't know where we all stand on the future of the Marine Terminal. I think we have diverse viewpoints and obviously that future impacts dredging plans. And having that conversation earlier rather than later when those plans are being developed, this would probably be a group that would have some lively conversations about it. Where the Marine Terminal ought to be in ten years, so.
One of the big issues in contaminated sediments is many of the public just want to see it gone. Dredged, put in rail cars, taken somewhere and dumped. But there's a lot of examples in Puget Sound and there's one right here of Olympia. Going back to the eighties, one of the most contaminated sites in the port area with one Triada Marina. It's not, no longer there, Bob knows about it and he knows this story. And, and this was probably nineteen eighty-three or eighty-four. We dredge back contaminated material, dug a deeper hole, dumped the contaminated material back in the hole. That's right out there. So that is a way to deal with contaminated sediments. But I'm afraid the public today, they want it out of here, they, they don't. But, you know, we, when I say we, I'm talking about the ecology, had a monitoring program for almost ten years. Those contaminants never moved. Ten feet below the surface, below the biological period of activity. And that sediment is still there. And there's another one, uh, there's two or three actually in the port of Seattle, same thing. Same thing that and your your site confined to sport for it rather than.
Essentially, it's a. Think it's deep a hole and we paved over instead of sediment.
Yeah, uh and that's in in Seattle same. It's actually, I think, now one of the. Uh areas where they bring in the um uh the ships, cruise ships. Um so. I think we're. If the Pocac can look at issues like that. And help. Public understand that if something like that was. It's okay. Again, I go back to the data. Data shows in all of the United States. That is a good way to dispose of contaminated sediments or like in um. Port of Tacoma, examining material was spread out in islands and then capped. With clean material to create a very new intertidal habitat. And I think that's where. Pocac can be useful, looking at that kind of information, saying that is a reasonable. And it's it's a.
Also help you with economics.
Yes.
I I just want to reiterate a point because I think. You ask, you know, what's the recommendation? Well, we as the Pocac, we take our direction from the commission. I I don't think we want to get too far out, getting specific about what we think the recommendation should be, if that's what you want. Um and with all the expertise that we have on the committee is is not. Uh it's not a substitute or not meant to supplant the the expertise and the talent of the staff. We want to support the staff. Um but I think we're very um conscious of our role. And and um and so we take our direction from the commission and we don't ought to. Overstep. Our position by by being real specific about things that that we would like to see. I think that that's not really our place. Um but I would think that the. With this panel of experts that you have, you must have an opinion of what. What the natural next steps, what the flow would be. I I think we should come to a consensus. Um. Amongst up on our group and and deliver that if that's what was asked for.
You know, if you if you were interested, like you were saying about developing partnerships with. The community nonprofits and and for, I mean, we would have some ideas about that. Which we could, you know, put to, we wouldn't want wouldn't want to get over the head of our skis and start talking seriously with these groups.
Right.
Without some uh feedback from you all, but that that's something we could design. Possibly and 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 present to you. Say, we would like to talk to these groups with these out potential outcome.
And you can potentially fill a real staff void because we don't have an economic development expert on our staff and we also don't have. Um sort of like general policy type um staff supporting the commission. And I don't think, Joel, it's getting ahead of your skis to say, here's a specific thing. We could review methods of sediment disposal and how they've been effectively used. Um in recent history, right? Like, I think that there is a trust that might exist for what comes from the Pocac. That apparently does not get conferred to our the private teams of consultants that. We fired. So having that sort of separate look from citizens engaged, I think, is very valuable. When you were bringing up Quentin, uh Commissioner Iall's comment about private and public partnerships, the sort of next step off of Debbie. Patton's presentation is sort of like. And something I've been asking Director Smith about, but she just doesn't have staffing to put it together, is sort of. What were those beginning partnerships that brought the money to the table to get the bigger picture going, the 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 bigger redevelopment? When you see Bellingham, it's part of a it's part of a whole set of things over ten years, like. It would be great. Um and so what I'd wonder is if we could have a mechanism where your chair and vice chair could simply send over. By the executive director, here are some things we we some specific questions we'd like to work on. And then we as a committee commission could say, yeah, here's how I prioritize them if if there's. Maybe different people, but yeah, we definitely one, two, and three, we'd love to get an update on where you're at by August. Um does I a quick question to my other commissioners. Do you feel like that's viable or? Like, do you have a different way you could see it?
Sounds valuable and viable to me. It's just that staff time question.
I think if I could, uh you know, a lot of what you guys are talking about. Um will be part of the master planning process that we want to do as well as the cleanup plans and they're really integrated because. You know, the decisions we make about how to use beneficially reuse the sediment impacts. You know, what could happen in terms of development. So my thought would be to somehow sort of create a a. A mechanism, a timeline, a plan to integrate these guys or insert them into various parts of. Stages of the master planning process and get their feedback um as we go. Is that is that aligned with what you were thinking? Little trouble. Mr. Savida.
I worry about um input coming after RFPs have already gone out. So when I think of. Where you get it, sometimes I I'd wanted to actually inform what we're seeking. And so that's all. I mean, big picture. I don't have like a Gep chart of what we're doing on. No, I don't think you have one either. That hasn't been withheld from me. So um so my only worry is. That kind of like really ideal dovetailing, if it if it has the effect of kind of putting. Their input on hold and definitely because it's waiting until the right moment comes up instead of letting it happen organically and then. Possibly being able to reap benefits from it as you go into your actual work. Seems all seems my preference because I've seen we are a little. We just have limited, the staff issue that Commissioner Tong just brought up.
Well, that's I I maybe I wasn't articulating very well. That's kind of thinking was getting their input at points in the process that would allow and sort of inform the next. Next steps of the next work that was done. So.
Just just um. My whole career, I've done what you're talking about doing, so I I have to lay out my observations in the process. You know, I think the suggestion that came uh to own a Pocac is that we have a second. Uh advisory committee. You know, and and somehow tied to the environmental part of it. We already have a destination waterfront part of it. What I haven't seen a gap on is some very basic steps that the port is going through right now that we're informed on. And then when we see that, then we can say, hey, we can put some valuable input at this point or this point or this point. And then on reverse type of thing, if we start down the pathway with two. Working committees, one being the working waterfront and and the other being environmentally, however we want to define that. Again, we can say from our perspective, what we're hearing, what we're seeing. Here are some things that I think are are going are going to become an issue. That we need to have an and we forgot an interface in between the staff. And our group to have a discussion and out of that can identify priorities or or timeliness or sensitivities in process. Uh Jack and I uh worked on CLIPA twenty years. We understand the waterfront many ways. And uh the so we know where a lot of those sensitivities are. And so you can flag those sensitivities. It doesn't mean we have an answer. It doesn't mean that our answer is going to be listened to. But at least it's a flag that says, hey, here's an interchange and and that's where we can become helpful as a Pocac. Because we have, we are representing the larger community and a very diverse setting. So we can flag that and just I'll give you one specific example. Some of your staff came and talked to our HOA. I live on over by Priestmont Park, Squaxton Park. And uh so they came and talked to our HOA and I keep feed, my feedback was, that's a poor presentation. It didn't answer some very basic questions that I thought the citizens needed to know and. So that that's where we can, and I did then have a discussion with staff and. We we had a very positive, very constructive input to help them understand what that was the reaction that came on that process. So. It's that kind of back and forth that I think would be very valuable. But to do that, we need to at least have some sense of structure of. Of milestones so we can, so we're not taking a lot of staff time. We're not taking a lot of our time. But when we come together, it's productive time to have a dialogue and then. Then 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 you as commissioners and and Alex as the executive. You get you're still the traffic cops. You're still going to make the decision, not us. But we're just inputters at that point.
So this week we're getting together with the consultant, helping us with the master plan and we're going to be laying out that kind of a plan and. And just um you guys and talk about where would be the best place to get your input.
So another specific example is the waterfront center.
I was gonna ask about that.
I think you are correct. We would love to have seen the RFP before it went out. Uh because I think we have some diverse views on that whole project and. I think perhaps there could be some benefits of having that discussion. Um. And staff brought it to the commission, maybe the commission might like it a little more. So that is an example of. If it can be done in. Process that the staff and the commission has, well, okay, we've got a little thing right here where we're going to spend. An hour talking with Pocac to get their thoughts before the RFP goes out.
Well, and maybe that that maybe sometimes that's with Pocac and the commission and to the extent they're willing to to solicit. Input uh after before something's fully baked. Um. There could be value in both directions. But the other thing I wanted to share was I I would really love if we just on a monthly cadence had what, it doesn't have to be Joel or Dawn, but whoever's designated. To come to the commission and say, here's an update of what we've been talking about and and by the way, you know. Bob and Jack have a lot of awareness and they wanted to flag this thing for you, you know, or just. Unmediated input, but public because we are transparent and public. I I would like some form for that as well.
I would agree. I think that's a really great idea to get that Pocac some more exposure to the public as well because there are various public members at each meeting. So. Hearing from you and getting an update.
I was gonna ask, are you referencing the coming to work session or coming to? What commission needs for this purpose?
That's a question. I mean, do you have a? This obviously is special, right? That everyone's around here and we're given it this much time?
What we used to do. What Pocac used to do was when we had individual projects that we worked on, that the committee would give. Uh of each project committee, each subcommittee would give a report at each Pocac meeting every month. And then um quarterly. Or whenever we were ready, the chair or some member of that committee would come and talk, like I came and talked about. Um apprenticeship utilization because I was on that committee. We can we'd come and and give an update, but. We could also do it at work session. So. But I think it would be beneficial because then you. It would be a two-way street. We would get clarification. Of what you wanted and then we could inform you of what. We had discovered or learned in the interim.
And while we do have the public who attend the work sessions, I think the regular meetings are watched more by the public and. We'll report it on to get the exposure of the Pocac out there too, which I think it's good for the public to know you will. About the hard work that you're doing.
Yes, my my what I have is that uh the port's a complicated operation. And uh, you know, I wouldn't want to get into the knitting of the port, you know, in words, I wouldn't want to get into such detail that we're. You know, creating um barriers to port getting things done. I think, you know, we should pick the issues pretty carefully as to what we want to get involved in. Staff and the port have, you know. They have ways to get things done that, you know, if there's just day-to-day operational things or even just planned pro- projects. We have to be very cautious about what we get our feet into. That's what I thoughts I have.
If I may, since we're short on time, I just want to make sure that any of the other Pocac members that haven't. Had a lot to say, uh that that we give them the opportunity to to address the commission. Oh, if Jack or Anthony or Darlene, if you had anything you wanted to add to the discussion, I just want to make sure that there's space for that.
Well, the only thing that in this just recent discussion is that. Pocac only meets once a month, correct? Or to go to a work session with commissioners? They meet once a month, correct? So it doesn't sound like there's enough time. From the Pocac, which meets on a Monday. If he ready for a presentation to the commissioners on Tuesday.
The commission meets three to four times a month. Our meetings are on Mondays, except when.
We wait once a month.
That's one of the reasons, though, that we establish subcommittees because the subcommittees meet more often.
I think the ask would be for a representative to come to some meetings and give a presentation.
Maybe there are topics that you would like our views on that you are dealing with. So and you know, you're going to have a meeting and next month on such and such and.
The practice at the port appears to be that we have to kind of. If we have to direct it each time, it's like we almost have to. Okay, so I would like to hear from the Pocac on this topic next week, or in the future and then. Three people vote for it and then it might get calendared or agendaed. Maybe we want that level of process around it. The other opportunity would be a monthly. Report where, you know, we might. Share things that that we think are of interest. So I I hear what you're saying about sideboards and and I will yield that to others. The one thing I also wanted to raise is the airport is not a topic we've really discussed. It makes me wonder. About the co- this composition because there's a lot of people interested in environment. It seems more on the sediment side. We've had already some issues like card issues about raised by Black Hills Audubon. And we have an airport which is like the prime endangered species habitat for two species. So I am curious about how the Pocac would relate to the update of the airport master plan.
Yeah, I I would be I would be interested in getting involved in that. I I do have some contacts at Black Hill, I'm a member. And uh I've talked to them about some of this.
So it does seem if we had a series of things, like for me, it would be the 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 whole sediment waterfront stuff. The you called it working waterfront, community asset um vision, but also the airport like has to be. There and and if we had a question for you on each of those with sort of your own recommended cadence of coming to update us.
We we also have an interest and um.
It's not here.
And and um port operations as well.
Yeah.
We have just haven't discussed it yet. Um the the Marine Terminal, um the airport. We have, we have experience on our on our group in those areas too. Just haven't approached it yet.
And and I I believe we we talked about potentially standing up an economic development committee as well. Where those issues in airport and and some other things could be ruled into. And I I think that was being discussed at the last meeting and but perhaps that was. Decided not not to go forward at this point or.
I kind of thought one step at a time.
Yeah, yeah, okay. It's it's definitely something that that I have an interest in.
And so I guess for me, I'm summarizing. I I respect if your recommendation is the subcommittee because that's how you wrap your mind around kind of how you. Move forward, but what I care about is the questions that we ask you to do and how and bringing them forward more than how you self-organize and.
Commissioner, I may I offer some uh some advisory committees will create a work plan. That addresses a number of issues and that work plan doesn't, it it doesn't have to be, you know, a two-year work plan. It can be shorter term work plans that. That the advisory committee helps develop. In conjunction uh with staff and then floats it to the commission. So that you have a chance to see if this is on point for you, so that you're not completely disconnected. And then you have then that groups, uh smaller groups are probably a little bit more easy to work with if they form independently that way. Um getting seventeen people, you know, ish to what to work on uh one particular project sometimes can be a little unwieldy. But the smaller groups are been very efficient. I think Destination Waterfront is a prime example of that. So that might be a model that this this group thinks about is uh creating some work plans for a couple of uh smaller subgroups a day. And and sharing that that work plan with you to get your to get your buy-off to make sure it's heading in the right direction.
I think tying that into what Alex um said earlier about the master planning. Can help form those groups and be able to report back to the commission on how. Their work fitting in with the master planning that includes environmental stewardship, economic development. Um bridging the two together um in a science-based approach. I think it's, it would be amazing to have, you know. Subcommittees working on work plans and I would recommend that since they meet monthly. That, you know, if those subcommittees were to be formed. That they could be put on the agenda at a at a regular commission meeting and present and have quite, you know, questions and discussion presented at that time. So that, you know, there is transparency and that the public is informed and all the citizens can. can hear the feedback from the POCAC and feel, you know, that they are included in in our master planning.
I just want to say thank you, Camille, for clarifying what I was trying to say, but
Well, I just wanted to express to the commissioners my appreciation for this group. They have just been a real enhanced my career in terms of just relationships. They've been really great to work with and Yeah, and like they I want to echo what they said. They they do not all have the same opinions and they work with each other and come to and work and work some through some of that. And I know that they're very eager to be supportive. So you've all done just
And before you move on, if I could at least ask and we could continue it with a formal resolution, maybe next week, but a Destination Waterfront team would engage with Mr. Branch on your recommendations for how we can do both at the same time. In other words, the idea of moving forward with the North Point, sort of a plan for that kind of arena type outdoor amenity development. But consistent with environmental concerns would be amazing.
I think anything we would would be consistent with environmental concerns, but knowing about a very small base that doesn't impact the waterfront, right?
And if, yeah, if Harry signs his name to that, that would be just
Sailing.
Okay. Will you navigate?
I was thinking, yes.
Ah, okay.
Field trip.
No, there are ways to enhance the waterfront and we could or salt marsh.
In the vegetation that we chose.
Exactly. So it's not just, you know, it's not just here's the land, here's the water. How do we integrate?
I can give you one example of the place I learned to sail in California, Palo Alto Yacht Club. There was a marina with boats and and building, nice buildings. When I was a kid, you go there today, the building is still there, but it's surrounded by salt marsh. The marina, if it were there, would be further out. You can still see the pilings coming up to the salt marsh, but it's it's just an example, a hundred thousand acres of tide lots and salt marsh have been restored in San Francisco Bay. And it's it's a great example. But we could build things, we could build a building in Salt Marsh that say, oh, even overhang the upper beach. You can actually do this if you get the building permitted before the restoration. It it can remain right in that location. But the beach underneath might not be completely different. And you can incorporate tide pools and water and other features into buildings. But we could kind of work through these ideas, I suspect.
Let's go to Palo Alto.
September off either.
I have a concern about the, I'm just going to bring this up here because we've talked about it before. How we communicate, how POCAC communicates with the community and how we get feedback into what needs to happen. And we talked about at one point having some forums where we we go to the community, have them come in and say, you know, we'd really like to see this and what about that? And, you know, get yelled at a little bit and try to smooth out the edges and then bring that back into our work. Because we don't really have, we have individual connections to the community right now, but we don't have a a POCAC community connection. So we need to work on that, I think, within the committee, but I think that if you had a concrete work plan where you you were looking to answer a certain question, I might feel comfort with you doing community engagement around the question. I've I've gone back and forth with Mr. Hanson on this a little bit because in some ways I feel an elective commission is there to make sure we are in touch and understand what the community members think. And I I know that there have been times when community members have very much wanted a specific speaker to come here, not to the POCAC because they want to make sure that the commissioners are hearing. And so that's just there. There is a little something to navigate. But if we had a thing where it was you were informing your sediment presentation and and as part of that plan, we're going to take it out to these three different places and include bringing back to us the feedback. I mean, I think we could do something more structured like
Actually, in the form of like a public survey or gathering public feedback that you
Anything else you need from us to feel like today achieved its goal?
I'd be interested to to just thumbs up or thumbs down. Would you like us to prepare a work panel with some specific recommendations? Because I think we can do that. And and then either direct that through Camille and Alex or then to the commission, just some some guidance on specifically how you'd like us to proceed. Would be helpful because again, we we have a resolution, we follow the resolution and it says we get our until you decide to change that resolution. Says that. Well, is there any objection from any of the commissioners that we follow with Mr. Hanson's recommendation? Or suggestion?
Well, I invite it. I encourage that, yeah, to be able to hear back from the POCAC priorities and and a work plan and what you see.
That wouldn't be excellent. Thank you. All right, anything else?
Are they going to stay for agenda setting and they
Community conversation.
If everybody's okay with that, we're gonna
I appreciate all of you guys speaking today. It's really important.
Do continue to engage. We'd love to hear feedback and email.
I'm gonna ask for a five minute recess.
Well done, Mr. Chair. Oh, my. Yes.